This is a presentation that I've given over the last, I want to say 16 years for the various iterations of OPD, OSI, Office of Energy and Planning, and I forget the original one, but welcome to all of you. Thank you for taking the time to spend some time with us on a beautiful Saturday morning. Just as a reminder, we're going to fly through some materials. There is a more extensive document on my website at dtclawyers.com in the resources page that goes through a lot more of the who, where, when, and how questions that we are not going to address today. Instead, what we're going to do is go through the basics of the four key elements that you as a board member will have to deal with administrative, appeals of administrative decisions, special exceptions, of course, variances, as well as equitable waivers. Time permitting, we'll touch briefly on 91A issues that have confound the boards, as well as the new housing appeals board. I'm all for questions throughout the process. However, because we're not live, I can't respond to you as easily. Noah will be monitoring the chat and after each of the sessions, there will be a time for me to try to respond to a couple of the questions. I'm happy to stay over during the break to field others. I do ask however, because I see on the list that there are many of my firm's clients, as well as other firms' clients, I am asking you to ask hypothetical questions only, not something you're actually dealing with, but that wonderful three o'clock in the morning thought that you had thinking, gee, as a wonderful ZBA member, what would happen if? So that's going to be the illusion that I'm going to answer your questions with. I'm not here to take over and give you an opinion that may be contrary to your town's or city's attorney advising the ZBA. Of course, if you're my client, what I'm telling you is gospel. So let's start with appeals of administrative decision. Key statutes are referenced there on the slides, 67433 and 6765. And this is when the ZBA takes up an appeal that is filed by a person aggrieved is the statement. It can be also a department or officer of the municipality that's affected by a decision of somebody else in town. But it has to be concerning the zoning ordinance. It's not the site plan review regulations of the planning board. It's not the planning board subdivision regulations. It's the zoning ordinance. Now that administrative officer can be many bodies within town. Code enforcement officer, the zoning administrator. It can also be the planning board when they are interpreting the zoning ordinance. It does not include however, the selectman's decision to exercise their discretion to enforce an ordinance violation. That's not something that comes up to the ZBA. Also remember, there's the Sutton v. Guilford case several years back now, that if you wanting, if a body is wanting to challenge the building permit, that has to be made to the ZBA first. The SAE two case, the Alpha SAE Trust v. Hanover in 2019 is the second of the Dartmouth frat house cases. And that was a decision concerning the zoning ordinance requirement that the houses be in conjunction with an institutional use. And here the college had suspended the frat CEO and issued of notice of violation. They could no longer reside in the frat house. And the ZBA initially found that the frat existed prior to zoning. College moved for rehearing. And then the ZBA reversed its prior decision, which was upheld by the trial court, and then had a split issue decision by the Supreme Court. The key issue that the court found in error against the town was delegating their authority to make the determination of was the frat an institution? Was it in conjunction with an institution? And the record reflected that the ZBA had left that really to the college to decide. One of the issues that was raised, that's an important point to remember, is lack of prior enforcement does not prohibit the current enforcement action. That's a good case to remember for that. The ZBA also is free to accept or reject evidence. That's a longstanding principle, but this case reiterated it. So long as that decision is reasonable and it can change its mind, but based on evidence before it. Also, there was a, the frat challenged one member's efforts to notify the college of, of the issue. And the court said that was in and of itself not a bias, not something that warranted removal or recusal rather of the member. As we said, appeals can include planning board decisions which are based on the construction, interpretation, or application of the zoning ordinance. But there are provisions in the statute that allow certain elements to remain solely within the planning board. And those are provisions that are solely adopted as land use control regulations under 67421, where there is a clear delegation of authority for its administration to the planning board. Now, sometimes that line gets a little gray if there are other provisions of the zoning ordinance that apply within, say, that overlay district. It is still something that those issues, I believe, still have to go to the ZBA. The challenge to the interpretation of the innovative land use control has to go up to the Superior Court for appeal. And appeals from planning board decisions are ripe when they are made. You don't have to wait for the entire planning board process to continue. In fact, it's just the opposite. You aggrieved person has to bring that appeal of administrative decision within the 30 days whenever the, or whatever time period the ZBA rules state for appeals of administrative decision after that planning board decision is made. We give you several cases where there is the interpretation of the zoning ordinance. One case to remember in 2019 is the Working Stiffs v. Portsmouth case. That's an interpretation of dwelling unit versus transient occupancy, which was an Airbnb case. As some of you know, that is a hot button issue and it was really driven by the terms of the zoning ordinance itself. One case, the Accurate Transportation Dairy case though, is merely saying that the site plan application is complete is not enough to trigger the appeal to administrative decision. You don't have to have brought it on that issue alone is the court's statement. Pardon for the typo on this one, but you're governed by time periods. The 30 day period for appeal, if that is the town's regulation, commences the day after the decision, whatever the time period is, it commences the day after decision. In a new case, Cranewood v. Moultonboro reiterates that point. Per the changes to 67715, you have a appeal coming to the ZBA first. And if there is confusion, as sometimes there is, a Superior Court case may also be brought. But by the rule, the Superior Court cases in essence stayed to allow the ZBA to make the local determination. And that's PPI, the Wyndham case, while it's unreported, it is found on Lexis. Reasonable time is the court's phrase if the ZBA rules are silent. And we give a series of cases here about what is or is not a reasonable time. 14 days was deemed to be a reasonable time, 55 days was not. That's the Tisonovich case. Sometimes these cases have a bit of a Frankenstein moment. They come back to life. Depends upon, again, the language of the ordinance and the issues in play. The Harp, second harborside case, Harborside v. Portsmouth in 2012, had the ZBA upholding a planning board decision that a change in the plan of uses for this downtown development was not a change of use needing a new site plan and thereby being, having the project be subjected to amended provisions of the zoning ordinance concerning parking. The court found that was wrong, that in essence, it looked at the uses that were previously approved for this large complex, which was basically going to be retail spaces, apartments, hotel and condos. And the developer, after they got all the approvals and after the parking regulations changed, wanted to change a significant portion of the retail space and some of the apartments into a conference center, convention center. And the court basically looked at the list and going, okay, you originally had A, B, C, and D. You now have A, B, C, and F. F wasn't on the original list and you've changed up D. So if you that as a significant enough change to mean that the new parking regulations applied. Always the ZBA has the authority to determine if an unappealed interpretation of the zoning ordinance that a variance is needed is still correct. That's the Bartlett v. Manchester case in 2013. And the statement is contained in every variance application is the threshold question whether the applicant's proposed use of the property requires a variance. As some of you know, I appear in front of you and sometimes I have filed that, I don't think I need to be here statement in front of the, how I, how I, my client complies with the zoning ordinance variance requirements. So it is something that is to be considered and can be considered by the board, even if no appeal of administrative decision has been filed. It is one where this is again, in reference to SAE two, that they can hear the notice of violation if it involves the officer's interpretation of the zoning ordinance. And more importantly, if there is an appeal of administrative decision, that pursuant to 676:6 stays the action being appealed from. Unless there is a provision under the law that if the administrative officer certifies that something needs to happen to protect life, health, safety, property, and the environment, such as they've started to do work in creating something for, for a subdivision project that violates the zoning ordinance. And that spade in the ground work, if left open, could then create some erosion issues, downstream water pollution issues, having the silt fences put in, having some mitigation efforts taken place after the zoning administrator says thou shalt not is allowed so long as that administrative officer gives that certificate. Otherwise, all works off the, my interpretation is the, the planning board action needs to stop. Let the ZBA take care of its business before it can, the planning board can continue. There may include constitutional challenges against the zoning ordinance provisions. And I list a number of cases here. The first is a, is a sign ordinance issue. And I want to flag a new decision that was just handed down by our US Supreme Court on sign issues that you might want to take a note of. It was decided on April 21st. It is the City of Austin versus Reagan National Advertising. And in short, it states that off premises sign regulations are not a per se violation of the First Amendment. The advertising company wanted to put various off premises signs in an electronic format. And the city's ordinances said basically, you can't have electronic off premises signs. And the Supreme Court got to hear that one came down with, it's not a violation of First Amendment. There is reasonable rationale for the restrictions. So it's worth noting if you have, have a sign issue. Also municipal Estoppel can sometimes be raised. There are various cases where it was referenced in the decision. And more importantly is the Dambiek v. Holderness case that was decided in 2014, where an assertion of municipal Estoppel can be raised for the first time during the trial. Doesn't have to have been before the ZBA. And more importantly, the, the court said that the statutes don't necessarily confer jurisdiction to the ZBA to grant relief solely on the equitable doctrine of municipal Estoppel. Distinguished the Thomas v. Hooksett case, which was on the prior slide, because in essence, that was, that was something that was in the facts, but not addressed in the briefs. And so the court did not take up the jurisdictional issue. Want to come back on that one. The, the important issue there is I think the, the Dambiek case means that while you might well hear the issue of municipal Estoppel raised. And municipal Estoppel is the officer told me, the, the code enforcement officer said, this was good enough, this was met the zoning ordinance and went ahead and built the building. Then in the Dambiek case, and the building happens to be right next door to Town Hall, the code enforcement officer said, you can't do that because you have another dwelling unit in the boathouse. So you have to get rid of one or the other. And the Dambiks challenged that decision. What municipal Estoppel means is in essence, if I rely on the right person, I'm entitled to go forward. Thomas v. Hooksett said that is a limited issue if the zoning officer is just blatantly wrong. They can't say, you can have a setback of 15 feet when the zoning ordinance clearly says 20, for example. But it's something that has, there is some element of discretion when it comes to municipal stuff. Bottom line, if you're faced with that issue, please call your town council. Another one is Foster v. Henneker case on the definition of accessory use. That is in the hot button issue of agritourism, which is constantly in flux. And the legislature continues to put that football in play. Important for other matters however, is the way the court defined accessory use. It's occasioned by subordinate to the principal use. And it's got to be some use that is associated with such frequency that's substantial enough to rise above rarity. Means most people treat it that way. They, a garage is an accessory use to a, to a single family residence. No doubt about it, a shed, something like that, a deck, wedding venue in a tree farm. Maybe not. Wedding venue in a hotel, probably. You know, it's going to come in to the facts of the case. And you have to, the proposed use would have to commonly habitually and by long practice been established as reasonably associated with the primary use in the local area. It's going to be highly fact specific. As I said, legislature continues to deal with agritourism. Look to the, look to the statute in 21 for more guidance. One question is frequently raised of, okay, we have a lower body deciding it in one way. Does the ZBA have to follow that lower body's interpretation? And the answer is you're not required to do so. It's usually a de novo review, but depending upon the facts and circumstances, the ZBA can give deference below that Willett case v. Kingston was concerning the construction of a new supermarket where the lot was divided by the historic district boundary line and the regular commercial district. And the building was, I believe, going to be in the regular district. And the historic district said it wanted certain things done to the facade as a recommendation and denied the, the historic district commission certificate for it. ZBA made its determination of, they've made enough changes to the normal format for their branding of a store. The buildings outside the HTC, we're going to let it go. And the, some of the butters were upset and said, the HTC should have been given deference. The court said that's, the ZBA is allowed to conduct a de novo review. The CD, CBDA case involved a campground matter up in Fortin. It's important because for the first time, the Supreme Court stated that the Fisher v. Dover standards, which normally apply in the ZBA world, you can't deny up an application and then have that same application come back in front of you and granted that that Fisher v. Dover standard applied to planning board decisions as well. One of the items in the materials that are, I believe, per Noah on the OPD website, not only a written text, but there are cheat sheets at the back. And the cheat sheet gives you a very kind of one page summary of what's the general principle of appeals of administrative decision in some of these key cases. At this point in time, Noah, do we have any questions on appeal of administrative decision that we can field at this time?
Yes, we do have one or two, Chris. We have a question from Audrey Klein. If a ZBA is hearing a variance, for example, on density and the submitted site plan indicates the future merger of two parcels to be approved by the planning board and the proposed buildings have a setback violation of the existing property line, internal property line to be removed by lot merger, does the ZBA need to rule on a variance for that paper encroachment?
That's a wonderful hypothetical, Audrey. What I would, if I understand the facts correctly, if the presentation before the ZBA is parcel A with the ultimate decision of parcel B and parcel C coming into the plan. If there is a variance request for the boundary line between parcel A and parcel B, a line that if I understand correctly, you're saying will eventually go away. Do they need to grant a variance for that setback line? I guess the board could make a Bartlett v. Manchester determination that based on the facts before us, in light of the intended merger of A and B, that line is going to go away, therefore there's no variance is needed. If that doesn't happen, you have to come back would be the kind of prophylactic protection you'd want to put in.
Great. And we have another question, another actually, another second question from Audrey. Can the ZBA determine that an application does not need a variance?
Yes. Yes, that's the Bartlett v. Manchester case. And I see Annie Robbins has, how does a potential lawsuit weigh on decision process, if at all? You really should be blind to that from a standpoint of you try to, you try to base the decision on the facts and evidence in front of you. Now, real, that's, that's the high, you know, academic or possibly impossible attitude to take. However, you're not, I've never liked to bully. Everybody can say, I'm going to sue you and you know, it happens this day and age way too often. But it is one where counsel will advise you, you know, where are the risks? I have had on more than one occasion say, no matter what's going, you know, what decision you make, somebody's going to be unhappy and they're likely to sue. So make the best decision that you can based on the record. What's the easiest position to try to defend based on the record? If somebody is saying, well, this is going to diminish my property values. And you've got a realtor from the area that's well respected saying, no, it doesn't. You've got assessment information that says, no, it doesn't. Somebody saying that, you know, is somebody saying that? So you weigh all the evidence and what is most likely the right decision. Another key point, no matter what type of matter you as ZBA members are deciding, you don't check your common sense at the door. You know your neighborhoods, you know your towns, you know your zoning ordinance. That's what you bring to the table as wonderful volunteers, which, you know, nobody thanks you enough. So thank you for doing what you're doing. In the interest of time, let's move on now. We'll try to have some, some follow up time at the end. But let's go into special exceptions. These are obviously different from variances. Variances seeks permission to do something the zoning ordinance says thou shalt not. Okay, you're, you're looking to violate the zoning ordinance. A special exception is a provision of the zoning ordinance that says what you want to do is allowed if you meet the checklist. If you have to meet all the conditions and that zoning ordinance has to provide those conditions. Those conditions need to be stated. If the conditions in the zoning ordinance say A, B, C, and D, those are the conditions. The ordinance can't, the ZBA can't on its own just say, for you, Joe, it's only going to be A and B. You don't have to meet C and D. Neither can the ZBA say, okay, Joe, you have to meet A, B, C, D, and E, F, and G. You go by what the zoning ordinance says. And the Ted Town, Ted v. Town of Alton case was a matter where the ZBA said, we know these are the ordinance provisions, but we're going to ignore one or two of them. You can't do that. You can however, grant a variance to one of the checklist criteria. If somebody can't meet, you know, the number of acres needed for that, that particular use or can't do the 50 foot buffer between the residential and the commercial zone for that use that's required is a special exception. They can ask for a variance from that, but that means they have to meet the five statutory criteria for that variance. Maybe they can do it, maybe they can't. But the 1808 corporation case I cite there stands for that principle. The applicant, as in all times, has the burden of proof to provide evidence that, to support a favorable finding. Additionally, if the evidence is there that the conditions are met, the ZBA has to say yes. It's much like in the planning board world, when the site plan regulations are met, the site plan gets approved. If the subdivision regulations are met, the subdivision gets approved. Same thing in the ZBA world on special exceptions. They are items much like variances that run with the land. I continue to cite the Garrison case as an anomaly where the court, this is that explosives plant case that involved 1,600 acres in the middle of Henneker, where they were going to use 20 acres for the explosive plant site. And one of the regulations, one of the conditions of the approval that was noted by the court, not necessarily as part of its decision. So it could be viewed as dicta, but they didn't have an objection to it is I think the So it could be viewed as dicta, but they didn't have an objection to it is, I think, the important part. That condition was this variance was for you applicant because you've come in and done this great dog and pony show of all your safety records and all the safety procedures you do. So if you sell this property with this explosives plant, the new buyer is going to have to come back in to get a new variance. Uh, that's unusual. So if you do something that is like that, it has to be strongly based on the particular evidence in front of you, like that dog and pony show on safety. I don't see, uh, something like that as the common condition of approval. Uh, as of, uh, 2013, uh, amendment to 67433 Roman IV, special exceptions are valid for two years, uh, unless they're exercised and vested. Uh, this means they can go stale and you may have to come back, have an applicant come back to you with a renewed application. Um, there is an exception for if a special exception goes through, uh, has to go through planning board and planning board process takes so long, uh, they get six more months after the, um, resolution of the planning board application uh, to, uh, act on that special exception. There's similar provision for variances in 674331A. And, uh, there's a later amendment, uh, in 2018 that in essence requires zoning amendment. If you're wanting to reach backward from that, uh, 2013, uh, amendment date to wipe out older unexercised variances and special exceptions. If that's a concern in your town, uh, and you haven't yet made those zoning amendments, talk to your town council about what you have to do, uh, to get that done. That, that two-year date can be extended for good cause, uh, if X, if asked for prior to the expiration. One thing to remember that may not make you the most popular person in town is the cell tower sites do not need another special exception or variance for co-location or modification of their antenna. Co-location is a federally defined term, meaning going up 20 feet. Um, and it is, uh, also defined in 12K2. So, uh, once a, once a tower is in, that is, uh, that is something that they are allowed. If in the approval process, the matter has to come to the ZBA. I have advised some of my towns when dealing with that to make a condition of the approval that this is the height that we're approving. And because you're having to come for this variance, you don't get to exercise that 20-foot more, uh, regulation. Uh, and that has been accepted so far without challenge. Um, as most folks know, the 2017 amendment dealing with accessory dwelling units, uh, came in play. Uh, so that unless you've modified your zoning ordinance to say they're allowed by conditional use or special exception, they're allowed as a matter of right, uh, anywhere their, uh, single-family dwellings are permitted. Uh, one of the things that we've seen many times is the amendment come in uh, so that there is a definition of size, uh, configuration. Uh, some towns have approved, uh, detached accessory dwelling units if, uh, certain conditions are met. And as before, there are as a cheat sheet on special exceptions. Uh, Noah, do we have any questions on special exceptions that, uh, we need to address?
Chris, I am not seeing any at this point.
Okay, let's keep rocketing forward because time is running out. Uh, variances, as we all know, the rules kept changing. Uh, one of the things I always liked to find when we were in, uh, in live uh, in the same room is, you know, what are the age of, uh, of service of folks? You know, who's within the first two years, 10 years, 20 years of service? Uh, every now and then I'd get, uh, one or two folks that, uh, my quip was always some are sicker than others. Uh, that had been on the board for more than 20 years and at, uh, 25 years, things like that. And at this stage of the game, you have to be in that neck of the woods and experience to remember the days when before Simplex, which came out in, in 2001, you had, uh, basically the rule of Governor's Island that said, only if you have no reasonable use can you meet a variance standard. Uh, Simplex comes in and starts monkeying with the, uh, the conditions of interpretation. Uh, then came BOSHA. BOSHA created the use versus area distinction, uh, court-created creature. And the legislature acted in 2009 with an effective date of, uh, January 1, 2010 to eliminate BOSHA, uh, ostensibly return to Simplex and revive Governor's Island. So that we have the current five standards. Uh, it's not contrary to the public interest, spirit of the ordinance is observed, substantial justice is done. Uh, no diminution of surrounding property values and unnecessary hardship defined as owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purposes of the ordinance provision in play and the application of that provision to the property and the proposed use is reasonable. There is also, that's the five A criteria. There's five B that if you don't meet A and you, you still get a second bite that has much of the same, same language in it. But ostensibly this was going back to Governor's Island. If you couldn't do anything, we're still going to, we're going to allow you a bite at the apple. Uh, it applies no matter what. It's a use variance, meaning it's the convenience store coming into a residential neighborhood uh, versus an area variance. The deck's going to go into the side setback. The addition is going to go into the side setback or lake setback. Uh, it's going to increase in volume. Uh, whatever your zoning ordinance says, thou shalt not. Again, remember the Bartlett v Manchester rule, you can determine if a variance is even needed. And it, I give you a number of cases in the written materials, but there are still four cases that I think are worth your study. Actually getting copies of them and reading the copy to see what the court is doing with these variance matters. Perot, Harborside, Malachi, Glenn, and Farrar are the ones we'll discuss today. In Perot, uh, New Hampton's ZBA denied a variance for a shed that was going to be one foot off the common boundary line with the abutter. And importantly, the abutter didn't have heartburn about it because their shed was equally, you know, their shed was right on the line too. So they didn't care. Both, uh, the, uh, courts did not, uh, upheld the ZBA's denial. Uh, and I think key here is the owner admitted there was an alternate location available, just wasn't the one he wanted. The ZBA expressed its concern on, uh, congestion of the lakefront property. Uh, it addressed the allegations by the applicant that while others are in violation, you're not doing anything with them, you're picking on me. Uh, the ZBA actually took some time, went out a couple of times, continued the hearing, uh, a couple of times and found that either of those violations were not violations or they predated the ordinance or the, thank you for letting us know, we didn't know about that one. We're now going to enforce on that one. So the negative squeal rule applied. The court, um, the, the ZBA rather, did make a reference to the Bacon v Enfield case on cumulative impact. Those of you who have been, uh, around long enough, and I believe it's in my, my detailed materials. The Bacon v Enfield case dealt with, uh, an applicant who wanted to put roughly a five and a half by four and a half foot uh, furnace shed on the back of their lakefront cottage. The entire cottage was within the 50-foot setback to, to, uh, Silver Lake. Um, and the court made, uh, a, a plurality decision, meaning nobody could agree on an ultimate decision. And the, the chief justice, Broderick's decision, nobody joined in specifically. So it was his decision that people concurred with. Um, there were two concurrences and a dissent of the five judges. Um, applicant did not challenge the, um, in, in the Perot case. Didn't challenge the use of the bacon statement of one reason for denial would be to avoid the cumulative impact. That was coming from, um, one of the concurring opinions. Uh, the Supreme Court made a reference to the Bacon decision in Perot, but only to a, it's assumed without deciding. That case, let me go back one. That case, uh, of was cumulative impact legitimate is addressed squarely in the Dietz v Tufton Borough case that we'll address in Equitable Waiver, a segment of the presentation. In essence, the court has now distinguished Bacon's cumulative impact rule is A, a concurring opinion only and therefore has no precedential value. And B, not something that is a determining factor, uh, alone on, on a decision. Uh, each case is dealt with, each property is dealt with on its own. The Harborside case was the first case in 2011 decided under the new, uh, 2010, uh, statute. That dealt with two signed variances that had been granted by the ZBA. And I think it's important, if you read this case, you will see what the ZBA did so well. And that was they made their findings. They used because statements. They said this criteria is met because X, Y, and Z. The second criteria is met because A, B, and C. And it gave the record to the court that was relied upon as saying those specific findings are supported in the record and affirm, uh, of, by the Supreme Court, the decision. The trial court, however, it was a mixed bag. The trial court affirmed one of the variances, reversed the other. And, uh, that's why it goes up to the Supremes. Uh, the Supremes also did a, a minor dig against the legislature, uh, saying it's, uh, what you've done is basically similar to, but not identical with Simplex and, and Governor's Island. We know what you meant, but you're not going, you know, it's not really the same. But we're going to deal with what you gave us now. You've changed the statute. Public interest, spirit of the ordinance criteria are continued, uh, to be considered together. What this means is a practice point is if you find yes on spirit of the ordinance, don't find no on public interest or vice versa. Uh, determine them together because the standard is the same. And the standard is whether the variance will unduly and in a marked degree conflict with the stated purposes of the ordinance. And it's mere conflict is not enough. Think about it. If there was no conflict between what the applicant wanted to do and the zoning ordinance, they wouldn't be before you. There would be no need to come for a variance. Therefore, Harborside citing back to, uh, earlier cases, including Malachi Glenn. The, you can't use the fact that they need to get a variance as a reason for denying a variance. You're there as the statutory constitutional safety valve between the regulation, police powers of the town and the live free or die property interest of the, uh, property holder. And those two things are sometimes in conflict. You as ZBA members are that safety valve. The court in Harborside goes on to recognize two methods of ascertaining whether that unduly and in a marked degree conflict occurs. And that's will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? My, uh, my argument, my, uh, analogy is that convenience store plopping the middle of the residential zone. That's likely to change the essential character of the neighborhood. If that convenience store is two blocks over on a, uh, a boundary road that already has a lot of commercial development upon it, but is still in the residential zone. Well, maybe not, maybe in that instance, it doesn't change, alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The other, uh, of the two methods is will the variance threaten public health, safety, or welfare? My analogy there is putting the propane storage facility and filling facility uh, in the middle of the residential zone. That might be a health, safety issue. Uh, potentially doing a major development over a significant wetland area might be a threat to health, safety, and welfare, uh, depending upon the language of your ordinance. The court, the Supreme Court in Harborside also distinguished what the trial court did from what it should have done. The trial court focused on will the signs serve the public interest? And here, the court, the Supreme Court goes on, uh, considers those factual findings as I, uh, indicated and flip too quick. And, uh, reversed the court on the two, those two criteria because it's is granting the variance contrary to the public interest. Not granting the variance serve the public interest. It's a, it's the word choice of the legislature that needs to be followed. And that's the emphasis that, uh, you need to follow as well. On substantial justice, uh, the court restates, uh, many prior cases. The only guiding rule is lost to the individual that's not outweighed by a gain to the general public by the denial is an injustice. Uh, again, uh, the Supreme Court found the trial court aired focus focusing on the only apparent benefit to the public would be ability to identify the property from afar. The ZBA correctly focused on whether the public stood to gain from the denial. It's the gain from denial on substantial justice that is the focus. If there's no gain as a result of denial, there's nothing to outweigh the loss to the property owner of their desired use of their property. And it did remand back to the, uh, the Supreme Court did remand back to the trial court because the court never reached the unnecessary hardship criteria on the parapet sign. Remember there are two signs involved. Parapet's up at the top of the building, marquee is down on the street level, the entry of the, entry of the hotel. Uh, that marquee sign, uh, used only the first of the two, uh, definitions and used five A, not five B for unnecessary hardship. And importantly, uh, the Supreme Court agreed with the ZBA that a one special condition of the property was the sheer mass of this multi-story uh, hotel building that encompassed a block of downtown Portsmouth. Um, and so that, that mass and that use was viewed as a special condition of the property. The court rejected the, the competing hotel, who was the, the, uh, appellate here, argument that the size is not relevant based on the concurrence of, of bacon. And here the court also says concurrence has no precedential value. And the applicant's not claiming the signs are unique, they're claiming that the property is. Uh, Here, the court rejects Harborside's argument of no hardship because they could do a smaller sign and still advertise their property. But the court distinguishes this by saying, look, you're, you're looking at a necessity element, which was part of the old BOSHA standard. Now we have, is it a reasonable use? So you, you don't look for necessity is no longer a condition. You don't necessarily need, there's no necessity for a garage to the house. That's not the standard. The standard is, is the garage a reasonable use on the house? When you come to consider that side setback variance. Again, they rejected the competitors' arguments that they couldn't meet because you can get the same result with smaller size. And that was rejected because it's under the defunct BOSHA case. And finally, the court rejected Harborside's argument, there's no evidence of diminution, no evidence of no diminution in value. Sorry for the double negative. But here, there was the statement of Parade's attorneys that were saying, look, putting these signs here in downtown Portsmouth is not going to diminish anybody's property value. It's okay for the ZBA to resolve those conflicts of evidence and assess credibility's of offers of proof. There, more importantly, I like this line. The ZBA is entitled to rely on its own knowledge, experience, and observations. So again, the ZBA here had a lot of because statements. Because I believe X or because there are other signs in the area or because whatever. That gives us the ability to defend the decision as lawyers going up to the trial court and going up to the Supreme Court. So the variance for the marquee sign was upheld. Malachi Glen, more quickly, that dealt with a, that is a BOSHA case, a BOSHA era case, but it is still cited in the case law now. So I read it as something that is worth paying attention to for various reasons. One, you have a a statement in here that again, the reason for asking for the variance can't be used as a reason to deny the variance. The court also has took, took caution, took time to note that here there were uncontroverted evidence from the applicant's expert witnesses and staff that were what the, what the project was intending to do, which was a hundred unit self-storage facility that had originally been approved prior to the last bust. This, at that time, probably was the 1999 bust to 2001. Then you get, they came back in and by the time they came back in, the zoning ordinance had added a wetland buffer rule. The wetland buffer rule would have basically cut the size of the project in half from a hundred to 50. And the applicant came in with a wetland scientist that had all sorts of catch basins involved, including some that were underground. So the water could be collected and slowly released before getting into the adjacent wetland, which then got into an adjacent stream, which then got into an adjacent river. And the testimony from both the expert and staff was this meets or exceeds what we would have wanted had the, had this dirt not been disturbed, had the buffer not been disturbed. So the uncontroverted evidence was in the applicant's favor. Hold on a second. Where are we? Where are we? No, up, what did I do? Hit the wrong button, guys. My apologies. Sorry for the scream. Noah, can you get me back? Okay, we'll wing it without the slides until Noah comes back. What I believe we were on was finishing up Malachi Glen. And one of the things that was an express no-no is the court called out one of the members for saying, the voters just voted this in and it's our obligation to come, to follow that ordinance. And again, the court's very clear in saying, thank you, Noah. I'll take control back and then figure out where we are. Okay, we're before Farrar. Well, Farrar's the next one. My apologies, folks, for technical difficulties beyond my control. The court in Malachi Glen said, thou shalt not do that. You can't say, I'm gonna uphold the ordinance because that's what the voter said. Because anytime any variance is before you, it's for relief from the variant, from the zoning ordinance that the voters imposed. There are five statutory criteria to meet. If you added that as a sixth, nobody would ever get a variance. So don't use that, that logic. On the city of Keene, Farrar v. City of Keene case, that is a case involving a 7,000 plus square foot old Victorian house. Off of Main Street, downtown Keene. All the other old Victorians in the street have been renovated, reconfigured into either offices or multifamily buildings. The owner of this property that abutted a purely residential zone wanted to have a mixed use. Some apartments, one of which was going to be for him to be able to still live in his place and some offices. Because it was a mixed use, the code enforcement officer said, you know, I don't see our ordinance clearly saying you can do that. We have a permissive zoning ordinance, meaning if it's not listed, you can't do it. We list out what's permitted. Is what a permissive zoning ordinance means. So go to the ZBA. I think you should get it, but get the, get their approval. The ZBA granted the variances. And again, this is a BOSHA area, so it's both use and area terms were used. And again, found various things, including the size of the lot, the size of the building, the, the taxes paid by this guy for this 7,000 square foot building. The line, you know, the back line, property line was where the residential zone started. The fact that others had already conferred, transferred their properties into other formulas than single-family dwellings. And the fact that the mixed-use traffic count would actually be lower than had it been all office or all multifamily, both of which were allowed uses in the zone. So the variances were granted. Farrars are the property owners on the residential side of the back fence. They're upset and they bring the case forward. It was basically the ZBA was reversed by the trial court, but upheld by the Supreme Court. And again, it's on the evidence before you is why this is still an important case. The issue of third prom, the issue of simplex standard, that's no longer clearly in play. But it's a case on substantial justice. It's a case on looking at the evidence that is in front of you on those, on that particular use. If, in my opinion, if Farrar was decided now, I would expect the court to say the as-built condition of that property with its 7,000 square foot home and the fact that it's surrounded by other, either all offices or all multifamily buildings are some of the special conditions of that property. Again, I have a cheat sheet on variances. I do note that we, we are still in a, sometimes the terms, area, or use are used, but the standards apply. The one-size-fits-all now under the standards. There are things called disability variances. That means that if an applicant is needing, for example, the handicap ramp that crosses into the side setback or the front setback, that that variance can be granted without a finding of unnecessary hardship. But you have to find that it's a reasonable accommodation made necessary by persons with a recognized physical disability. This is one case where the ZBA can impose a condition that the variance remains for as long as the particular person continues to have the need to use the premises. I have seen some where the developer was creating duplexes with, that are intended to be ADA compliant so that those would stay and that they would be transferred either rented or, or owned to those that had those needs. And the ZBA allowed those to not have that lifetime condition of existence. Before we go on to equitable waivers, are, what, what are our questions on variances?
Yeah. Noah? So we do have a bunch of questions. Just, we have about just under 20 minutes left. So our first question is variances, this is from Connie Porter. Variances seem often to hinge on providing unnecessary hardship. Please define this in light of self-created hardship. We have many small cabins along waterfronts and there is significant pressure from recent changes of ownership to want to create year-round larger structures all within 75 feet of wetlands. By what means can the ZBA find that the new owners knew what they were buying and seeking a variance based on hardship is not appropriate? What exactly is meant by reasonable use?
Okay. Again, a purely hypothetical question that I know you will go back to your own town council and ask if there ever was an issue coming up on that specific instance. But hypothetically, let's answer the question in reverse order. Reasonableness is like beauty. It's in the eye of the beholder. One definition of reasonableness is found in the Vajit decision, which i- in part says it is reasonable when the use is allowed in the zone. And it's use, okay? Is it a reasonable use? Doesn't necessarily mean, you know, that it is a, that the statute is intending to you to say, is it reasonable to encroach 15 feet into a 20-foot setback? But is the use reasonable? You look special conditions of the property, meaning it's got this configuration of land, that configuration of wetlands. The houses around it are of X, Y, and Z. It's, I have long said, it's easier to be last than it is to be first to redevelop in the neighborhood. But it is, it is common when, especially in this boom time of residential real estate post-COVID, to see folks want to have the seasonal camp made year-round and much larger. One thing, you, you mentioned the phrase. Oh, I'm dialing back. It's on hardship. It's the, it's in essence, it's the invited. You, you, you knew what you bought. It's, the court has said, and it is in my materials, and I'm blanking on the name, it might be the Harrington case. That that assumption of the hardship by buying under those conditions is a non-dispositive factor. That means it can be considered, but that's not in and of itself the end of the debate. Because ownership changes, property doesn't. Property is, has its condition. The, the BOSHA standard had both economics and necessity in it. Was it necessary to have that encroachment? And that's a very different standard than what we have now. Now we have, what are the special conditions of the property? What is the term of the ordinance being varied and what's its stated purposes? And is there a tie? Is there a rational tie between that provision of the ordinance and the no in this circumstance based on the special conditions? And is the use reasonable? The use of a single-family property in a single-family zone is probably reasonable. Is it reasonable to put a 6,000 square foot house on a 4,000 square foot lot? Maybe not. Is it reasonable to put a 2,000 square foot house on a 2,000, on a 4,000 square foot lot? Maybe. If the, if the existing house is already non-conforming, remember, look at your non-conforming structures provision or your zoning ordinance. Not just the side setback because there you have some play in the joints. And I hope I have answered that rather lengthy hypothetical adequately. Do we have any more, Noah?
Yep. We do have one or two more here. With the, this is from Jason Plorty. With the unnecessary hardship criteria, there generally needs to be something unique about the property. Can that uniqueness be associated with the existing structures on the property? Also, can that uniqueness be that the subject lot is zoned differently than the abutting properties?
Okay, yes, it can be considered the, what's as-built now. What's, where is the encroachment? Where's the disturbance already? That may make that parcel relatively unique, have, be a special condition of that parcel. What was the second part, Noah?
Yep. The second part was, can the uniqueness be that the subject lot is zoned differently than the abutting properties?
Is it zoned or is it owned?
Zoned.
Is it zoned differently? Interesting then, so in essence, you have, you have a lot on a border that they're wanting to use in a way that is either compliant with their side or compliant with the, the abutting side. It can be, yes. In fact, Farrar made comment to that. This is a house that's on the, on the border with the residential zone. So yes, it can be a special condition. The configuration of the lot, the location of the house, the location of wetlands can be, can be special conditions of this property that distinguish it from others in the area.
Right.
Let's, let's move on. And we'll hopefully have time at the end to take a few others. But let's move on to equitable waivers. These are governed by different statutes, 67433A. This is limited to a physical layout, mathematical or dimensional requirement imposed by the zoning ordinance. And it's, I view it as the whoops rule. This is not allowed for use. You can't, in the, in the Schroeder v. Wyndham case, the garage was placed into the wetlands buffer, then the language of the ordinance was, was analyzed by the court in such a way that said, that's not a setback ordinance. That's a use restriction. That's saying thou shalt not put anything in this buffer. So it was, it was highly fact-specific, but it's key to remember it's, it's dimensional, it's not use issues for equitable waivers. The four criteria of the statute, the, the violation is not noticed until substantial completion. The violation doesn't come from ignorance, bad faith, misrepresentation on the part of the owner or its agent, but instead is a good faith error in measurement or an error in interpretation by a town official. So the zoning ordinance, uh, administrator says, yes, you could put the house there. And it, that's an error. That doesn't mean that, um, everything has to come down. It means that they have to come through and try to get the equitable waiver. Uh, they measure in good faith that where they think the property line is, based on information that they do have. Come to find out that property line is actually a foot to, foot closer in. So that means their foundation is a foot too close to the boundary. This is different from a variance. This is an equitable waiver. The other criteria is the violation doesn't create a nuisance, either public or private, or diminish surrounding property values. And finally, that the cost to replace and repair far outweighs any benefit. In essence, it's a balancing test. There's a, there's a caveat to those four criteria that if the violation has existed for more than 10 years without even a letter in the file of a violation, they don't have to, uh, make the first and second criteria. Importantly, if an equitable waiver is granted, the property is not non-conforming. But going forward, you still have to comply with everything. So if you wanted to expand that house that got an equitable waiver, you'd have to then get a variance if you're going to go, go forward. There is still the principle of constructive knowledge of the applicable requirements, uh, nor does it impose a duty on, uh, municipal officials to guarantee plans. One case that is, uh, what's called a three J X decision, uh, three J X means it's heard only by three of the Superior Court, Supreme Court judges, and it's non-binding. Uh, but it was the RMD, uh, Trust v. Milford case where, uh, the grant of an equitable waiver was reversed, where it was not based on the owner's measurement error, but rather on a cons, you know, a conscious decision to hold a non-conforming line. You know, it's, it's, he knew what he was doing was wrong, he just did it anyway. That doesn't qualify for an equitable waiver. The first reported case we have for, uh, equitable waivers is the Dietz v. Tufton Borough case. That's one that's worth reading because it's complicated factual background. But in essence, two folks on the lake, one doesn't like what the other one's doing and has had a series of approvals, uh, after the fact, uh, some of the prior approvals were deemed to have, should have had variances granted. And instead, at this time, uh, the ZBA grants the two equitable waivers. Some of the key points to remember in this case, written findings of each of the four criteria are not required. You should however, discuss each of them, much like you should, uh, always discuss the five variance criteria. But, uh, the court said one vote is, is sufficient. It is also, um, intended to be interpreted broadly if the reliance is on the misrepresentation of the municipal official. Um, moreover, uh, while the burden of proof on the four criteria is on the applicant, once the ZBA grants the equitable waiver, the burden of proof shifts to the appealing party. Uh, this case also, uh, stands for the principle that you don't check your common sense at the door, you're supposed to use your knowledge, experience, common sense. Uh, you do not need to have gone for a variance and been denied before coming to a, get an equitable waiver. That's not part of the statutory criteria. The abutter is, was claiming it was. And this case also stands for the prax, uh, premise that the bacon cumulative impact, uh, is not to be, uh, brought forward. Give you a cheat sheet on that. And before we go on quickly to 91A, any questions on, uh, equitable waivers, Noah? I see one from Peter. Is it good faith error when a licensed surveyor is off by 30 feet? Um, and this is for a new structure, not looking back 40 years. Um, well, all I can say is, uh, if somebody sealed the, sealed the plan and they were wrong, they sealed the plan and they were wrong. Um, the, the issue really comes in of, um, what was that based upon would be my questions. You know, if the guy finds a pin, uh, in the middle of the field, well, what's it tied to? Where I've, I've had more than one case where there are all sorts of rebar scattered around, but three quarters of them to 99 of them don't make any sense of where, you know, where are things in compliance with other known circumstances, other known plans? Uh, but errors do get made. Uh, and again, for a purely hypothetical question, Peter, that's a good one. Um, Jimmy Lee, uh, resident builds a structure after being told by the town, they do not need a building permit. And a year later, they're notified of a zoning violation for it being in the setback. I think that's an equitable waiver situation, Jim. Um, you know, I would hope there's some writing for the, for the resident, uh, that, that supports them being told. Um, and yes, Audrey, there is probably a, if the equitable waiver is denied, uh, then there's definitely a civil action between the owner and the, and the surveyor. But I'm not sure that, um, I'd want to know more about the particular facts on that 30-foot survey issue. Uh, and I would strongly suggest, Peter, raise this with your town council. Let's touch briefly on the bane of everybody's existence, 91A. 91A is not your friend. Worse yet, emails are not your friend. Emails should be avoided at all costs. If, you know, the only sub, uh, only exception to that is if your board secretary is needing to find out, can members meet? Because you're a board that doesn't meet every month. Uh, the board secretary can send out an email saying, we have an application. Can you meet on the 12th of May? Your reply should never be reply all. If I was omnipotent ruler of all I surveyed for five minutes, I would move the reply all button to the far right-hand side, far away from send. Okay? Because reply all is constitutes a discussion. And more than one town has gotten burned significantly by having reply all conversations. So you reply back to the board secretary alone. Yes, I can make it on the 12th or no, I can't. Uh, you do not have, I don't understand this application at all. Why is this before us? I, I think this is just, you know, don't do that. Don't do that ever. Okay? You can have all those discussions in the public hearing, but not in email. A, a provision was added recently that allows, that is, uh, 91A3 Roman 2L allows a non-public session to consider legal advice, either writing or orally, given to one of the board members. There, that is a new provision, but I say, use it cautiously because what it allows you to do is to either hear the evidence or hear the opinion or read the opinion, but not discuss the opinion. You want to, if you need to discuss the illegal opinion, you want to have a grand non-meeting, great Orwellian term allowed by 91A colon two, with your town attorney, either in the room or on Zoom or by phone. So that you can have the, ask your questions. What does this mean, Chris? You said X, I don't understand it. Explain it to me. That's the kind of discussion you're allowed to have concerning legal opinion, but in a non-meeting with your counsel present in some form. 91A32L allows you to read or hear the opinion, but you then can't have any discussion about it. Also, a, a change to 91A2 Roman 2B requires that approved minutes, as well as notices of meeting, be posted on the website or listed on the website where they may be found. Those are important to remember because they're frequently forgotten. Okay? So remind your, your, uh, board secretary of those. There is, uh, a bill that, that passed last year, requires now, uh, sealed minutes to be listed. When you have a non-meeting that is discussing legal or hearing legal counsel, you then need to have taken minutes for that. And when you come out of the non-meeting, non-public meeting, excuse me, into the public session, you need to vote separately to seal the minutes. It's easier in my eyes to be having a non-meeting because you don't have to have minutes for those. But if you have sealed minutes, those minutes need to be listed, kept in a list, because eventually you need to unseal the minutes. That bill also created the exception under 91A5 subsection 12 that protects attorney-client and attorney work product documents from production under 91A. There is a bill that was seeking to reverse that protection, uh, that was, uh, recommended in expedient to legislate by the Senate. Uh, we don't know if it's going to revive itself, um, in some way, shape or form, but uh, hopefully that protection that is allowed for any other client of an attorney, uh, will remain in, in place. Um, before we go on to the Housing Appeals Board, are there any minutes? Let's see, Tim, Tim, if one board member or two board members of a board meet with or get advice from a counsel, is that allowed or are they required to involve the other board members? Okay, Tim, I, I want, that one may need a review with your counsel, but generally, one member, my practice is generally, questions come to me through the chair of a board, uh, rather than from the individual members. Um, because I want to know that it's a question that the town wants to spend the money on. It is usual for me to respond to one member, the chair, and then the chair brings that back to the board under the 91A32L. Or the chair decides, you know, I want to bring you in for a non-meeting, Chris. Um, I think that is, that's my protocol, but you checked him with your town council on what their protocol is. Okay. Um, with respect to the Housing Appeals Board, we're basically out of time. Um, the board is set up to ostensibly was for housing issues. Their current rules, uh, allow them fairly broad scope. Um, and, uh, there are bills currently pending that would limit that scope. We don't know if they're going to make it through the legislature or not. There have been various bills to kill it outright. Uh, those I don't think will succeed this year. There have been bills to add to the Superior Court judges that are assigned solely for, um, land use matters. My, my money would be, that's the way to go, but we'll see. Um, but they are having decisions issued. They do have a good website and the downside of this is you get very short notice. The applicant, not the court, gives you notice that they filed an appeal. Okay? And you have a 30-day deadline to respond to that appeal from the date it was filed, not from the date you're served. And in fact, you don't get served by the sheriff in an HAB appeal. You get something mailed to you. So talk to your staff to be on the lookout for things like that, especially in contentious cases. Um, thank you kindly. I think we are about out of time, but I see a couple of questions. Alvin asked, what's the difference between non-meeting and non-public meeting? Good question. Non-meeting is allowed by 91A2. Consultation with counsel as it, uh, an exemption to the general rule that all meetings have to be in public. It defines it out of the definition of a meeting. It's a non-meeting. I know it's an Orwellian term, but non-public meeting or a non-public session is governed by the provisions of six, of, of 91A:3 Roman 2. There are limited instances when you can go into a non-public session. You have to start in a public session, have a roll call vote to go into a non-public session pursuant to a particular provision of 91A:3 Roman 2. Then you're in the non-public session, meaning the public's not aware, not there, you're, the video camera's off. Minutes are kept though, and they can be rudimentary. We discussed X. And then when you finish, you come out of non-public session into public session, vote to seal the minutes by again, roll call vote, and carry on with your public meeting. Two different things.
Um, Chris, I, I don't mean to cut you short, but we are actually unfortunately already over into the break period.
My apologies, folks, thanks for the great questions. You've been a wonderful audience.
Um, so, um, I want to thank you, um, Chris, very much for another great session and thank you to everyone for attending. Um, and if we didn't get to your question, uh, Chris's email address was contained on the previous slide, um, and these, um, so if we didn't get to your question, Chris, feel free to follow up with Chris via email. Um, and OPD would also be happy to answer any questions, so feel free to contact us as well. The slides for the session are available for viewing and download on our conference webpage.